Call the City of Ellsworth Regular Council Meeting for Monday, October thirteenth. Your order, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the approval of the agenda. May I get motion in a second for that?
I have no reason to change it then.
Council President, I order to approve the agenda.
Five seconds.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hanson and seconded by Councilmember Allen to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign? Motion passed. Right, consent agenda. Questions about this? Concerns about?
You said on the council, amazing, that was a budget from last year, and then they asked once here for their money, and that's, you know.
So we can approve that with the consent agenda, right? We don't need a separate?
I think to, you know, I recommend, I move to approve the consent agenda as printed. What consent agendas are for everybody, and it's items that are somewhat routine. Supposed to budget already, or things that have like the airport, or IG boards, and like that. The claim ordinances and lots of, we follow all the different city policies, and do the stuff, and it passes them all, and then it's, you know, we're just really relieved of discussion. At eight point time, wherever some of the consent agenda, you can't ask to pull it off and would say, hey, vote for that, we want to talk about that one. And so you could say, you could say, I would move to consider item number X, whatever it might be, but, so.
Madam President, I approve, I move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Well, second. Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Allen and seconded by Councilmember Hanson to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say aye. Motion passed. Right, we've been on to public comment. Did we have anybody sign them? Okay, well, I would invite Mary Cookson from D VAC up. And Mary, if it's okay, I'll just read the proclamation, is that okay?
Okay. So, before I read this, I will tell you that I have the great privilege of serving on the D VAC board, representing Ellsworth County, and I think I've been on the board since 2019. Right, whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansas, including the city of Ellsworth. And whereas, relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one person's feeling of entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. And whereas, domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity, with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, and physical coercive control and abuse. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise fourteen percent of all homicides in the U.S., and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. The Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports thirty-two domestic violence homicides were twenty-one point five percent of all homicides in Kansas in 2023. And whereas, in Kansas in 2023, a domestic violence abuser murdered another person every eleven days, nine hours, forty-five minutes, and forty-three seconds. A domestic violence abuser committed a violent act reported to law enforcement every twenty-three minutes and zero seconds, and law enforcement made an arrest to domestic violence every forty-six minutes and zero seconds. And whereas, D VAC served eight hundred sixty-two victims, five hundred forty-two of which were from Celine County, and yet those numbers do not accurately reflect the total number of domestic violence victims, as we were continuing to struggle against isolation and other impacts of COVID-19. And whereas, we, as the City of Ellsworth, recognize this violence is inconsistent with our city's values and cannot be ignored, excused, or tolerated. And whereas, in declaring this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all citizens to know the facts about domestic violence, to familiarize themselves with resources, to recognize subtle signs of control tactics, to act as safe support systems, to speak up against perpetrators of violence, and any messages that inadvertently condone domestic violence, to get involved, to teach others and prepare future generations for healthy relationships, and to donate time or resources to their local domestic violence agency. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Coats, City Council President, City of Ellsworth, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I feel like I need to gather. That was a pretty powerful proclamation, so I'll go ahead and sign this. And then Mary, is there, can we get a picture?
That would be great.
You have any comments?
Oh, yeah.
No, we're excited again about being able to join you all for the test. And that's something that we look forward to. Um, we will be doing something. If you follow our website, we're planning on doing what we call a sip and paint at our agency tomorrow, where we'll be doing mock sales and we'll be giving payments. And so that's one of the other events that we're going to be doing, as well as we have a current, a annual, like, vigil coming up as well.
And if they would like to donate money or resources to D VAC, they can just look it up on Facebook or the website?
Yes, they can.
Perfect. Okay. Darce, will you take a good one? Got it. All right, do we?
Thank you.
Do we need to see in this? Do we need a copy of this, or we'll just print another copy and assign it?
I got it.
Okay, sure, that's all yours?
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for coming. Stacy, will you send that order to Nellman Neil?
Yes.
Please, thank you.
I think that might have been the most impactful proclamation we've ever read since I've been here.
Thank you, and you have a great day.
All right, so nothing else for public comment, right? Good. And it looks like we have no unfinished business tonight, so let's move on to new business. Five fifteen West Eleventh Street Minimum Housing Violation Public Hearing. guessing Nellman, that is you.
All right, the residents of Five Fifteen West Eleventh Street has not had running water since November twelfth of two thousand twenty-four, which is a violation of our Minimum Housing Code. Me and Steve issued a violation order for minimum housing code violation on July ninth, two thousand twenty-five. They didn't answer the door, so we left the door hanging a little bit on there. And then Dale would notice, we're moving this public hearing on eight twenty-five, twenty-five, to the owner's address of record by certified mail, and it was refused. No corrective action has taken place and remains unconnected to the green water system at this time, and we do not know if anyone's lived there at this particular time. There are dogs living there, and somebody's taking care of dogs.
Do you mean to open the public hearing?
Yes, they may, they may, and do audience's comments.
Great. So that needs a motion in a second, right? We need to go on, we just, okay. Before, well, I officially opened the public hearings for Five Fifteen West Eleventh Street. And the minimum housing violation. Anybody in the audience around Zoom wish to speak about this property?
Close it.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we move on to the end.
Yes, agenda.
Okay, so the next agenda, is Five Fifteen West Eleventh Street Minimum Housing Discussion.
Of course, referred to the comment, Councilmembers, Councilmembers referred to the, Delmon's report there, you know, I don't see a reason in my mind least not to declare this as a violation, or just something different there. And he goes ahead and moves forward with his, everything the resolution says we do.
Madam President, it is a time when the motion.
It can be.
I move to declare Five Fifteen West Eleventh Street unfit repot, the same, and placarded, as sensitive violations are corrected, and prioritize the mayor, city clerk, to sign Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three.
I'm sorry, you could have just said, I've moved to adopt Resolution number twenty-five.
I did, I said.
You could have said, we're in the work area.
But it's so much more fun, this, all of that. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Moon, and seconded by Councilmember Allen to, sign Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three.
Yeah, regarding that.
Regarding Five Fifteen West Eleventh Street, any discussion? Anything from today? Okay. Well, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The post say aye. Motion passed. Okay, so next is, Discussion of a Grant from the Kansas Department of Transportation for Airport Taxi Lane Project.
Council President, Councilmembers, and of course, President, welcome up here Brad Waller from Benish Engineering. A couple of years ago, the City applied for a grant, but the project was right down the line. He was supposed to be at the airport. This was the most topic of the agenda last, second meeting in November last year. And at that time, your former city administrator said, drop it, the council, like, everything. Last video, right, says, no, let's put it off until this year and talk about it more. Brad and I got talking, and spreading a little bit, and, and one of my concerns is cities haven't applied for grant funds, KDOT. It wasn't awarded grant fund over by their subsidies. Now, I'm old fashioned that, once you ask for funds, KDOT, and then you say, no, we've been on one matter all. They're gonna make them grants, gods. Went for it, it's bad word, very unhappy, and so, you know, my last point is, why didn't we apply for it in the first place? And, but I'll let Brad talk along about it, so.
Sure, again, Brad Waller of Benish, thank you very much, we've been here for a long time, so. Uh, yes, in fall of twenty twenty-three, we worked with the city minister at the time, you know, he thought he brought it before, but it's not, you're not. Yeah, I can't tell you the time, but to go out, and to go out. Uh, we were informed in roughly May, April, or May of twenty twenty-four that we were selected for. At the time, it was just one, we've got a couple of years to get finished, and we said, you know, not ready at the time, I forget what the all flex was at at the time. Uh, Mr. Daniel came on board, was it been a year now?
No, nine months.
Nine months, and he came, well, I brought him up to him, because we kind of found out on two things, and had board. But this was out there, and he said, you know, I'll just kind of wait, move until the end of the year, that's fine. Uh, I did coordinate with Ray Seif, Director of Aviation for KDOT, uh, within the last two weeks or so, and we do need to get the project moving forward within the next year, we want to go. So really, kind of what we're here today is to talk about, you want to pursue it, or you just want to say, no, it's kind of, um, you know, funded this time, let it go. But in short, what we've got is, we've got a project estimate for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The grant in hand is six hundred and seventy-five thousand. I say in hand, but it's, it's a little bit, it's ready for us to use. It is a ninety-ten match, so the city's match would be seventy-five thousand dollars for that seven hundred and fifty thousand. I have kind of got it to part. Question from the other page, but I've been bringing out a help, a grant here. Um.
The grant, we do have everyone, of four members, what, three, four, three, yeah. Yeah, and then the chair, boy, why not? Why not, and so they're all here, so if you have any questions with them as well.
Okay.
But basically, so I've been with the City of Ellsworth probably twenty years now. And when we started, we started out, I don't know, AOP and Master Plan way back then, and, uh, over that twenty-year period, we've really reconstructed your port, I think you probably see the body improvements. Uh, we got that runway taken there, and that was, it was not fine, that was pretty cool. Um, really, at that time, the only piece of pavement we have not touched in that timeframe are these two taxi lanes. So, that was what the image was, I knew those were constructed roughly twenty-five, thirty years ago, the airport board themselves did it. So it's actually called a three doggone way. Um, what we're looking at is the two taxi lanes there that kind of go to the south of the taxiway between the hangers. Um, that services the existing five hangers that are there today and provides for future expansion. Um, that is the, that is the basic gist of the project, the design, uh, very construction services and construction of the project for that. And that is basically the grant that has been submitted, it was before the year today. The reason I say it's potentially a two-phase project is if you are in favor pursuing this project, because we did submit it two years ago, um, recently, maybe kind of hard to see, but in the bottom left-hand, there's a building, a building ten. That's a good, that is the brand-new snow removal equipment building, the House of the Tractor, that was paid for by an FAA funding, uh, and construction completed last year. Um, with that, and it's hard to see on the printout, I should use a different color, but the, the blue hatch that goes from that building to the existing taxiway straight up on the page, it's in green outline. Um, it would be desirable, while we're doing this project, to try to add that into this, believe the taxiway to, to complete the infrastructure to date. That piece is not included or not budgeted in that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, with that, we also have with the sandy soils out there, a lot of washout issues with the airport getting around the taxiways and runways. So we will maybe try and add that in this project to our contractors on board, to do some things. So if we were to look and consider that, I do not know, I don't know, I haven't put any pen to that yet, but I would suggest that we plan about twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar addition ballpark, okay? At a ten percent match, that would be seventy-five thousand for the existing grant, plus a potential twenty-five, so a hundred thousand to the city. Isn't, we still chose to grow that. If we went that route, I would work with the airport board and, and the city to put together a grant application in January to KDOT Aviation. We would find out, probably about April selected, and then we'll just be included in the project. It really would not change the cost of the design or anything like that, if it's literally just a construction piece of the project. So it's while we're doing it, it's kind of one of those, we're going to bite the bullet for the value, so. That's really, I think, my discussion points, again, airport workers here.
I got a lot of questions.
Aye.
And first of all, I've worked with Brad the best in other cities, and at least, you know, probably, yeah.
You do.
And again, the, and, and the point is, 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 um, last year was, and I went back to last year, November being when it was kind of pushing toll. In my mind, it was confusion that night between the money we get from FAA, on a, you know, basically, we were talking about that a little bit to the council members, with Brad. And then this year, this is strictly all KDOT money. And we do have a lot of, so could FAA money be used for this, except the second project? Or does that even make sense?
In the past, KDOT and FAA money have been like oil and water trying against them, they don't always go together. Now, with the new directors been in place for the last two years, it's kind of a lot of that.
Okay.
But that has not been discussed, because we use it for the, sorry, building, damn, it's a long match, so I don't think there's a little pop there.
There not, okay, no, no problem, I just had that question. But there was concern last year, if they told me, I remember that, what's that meeting in the city ministry, I made a comment about, and I'm like, no, this was not having any money, this was the KDOT piece. We're a lot of, how many thousand a year do you know?
Hundred fifty thousand a year from FAA, banked for up to four years.
Yes.
Which is six hundred thousand total. Uh, it's the same match, ninety-ten. The difference is, is the FAA funding comes with a lot of strict requirements, shockingly, not from the federal government. It just doesn't quite go as hard, and it's been a hundred fifty thousand, I said twenty years ago, I started with a hundred fifty thousand a year for twenty years.
And it's a hundred fifty thousand.
So.
And that's all we got in Central City as well, right?
Yep.
I mean, regardless of the size of the city, you got a hundred fifty, so.
The good news is, we work really hard, we as in the, the Kansas aviation community. Um, KDOT Aviation has had five million dollars annually in the last ten, fifteen years, so to fill out. It is now up to fifteen million as of last year. We worked really hard with the legislature to go forward, we do that up. So there's a long walk to do for that funding, and most of that is a ninety-ten match.
On the Fed side?
On the state side.
State side, so.
State of Kansas.
The other thing on the Fed side, again, that, and I'm not serious, I know in Central City, we did, you're part of that, is the years we were getting to six hundred thousand, but we didn't have a project ready to go. So the hundred fifty that year, we actually gave to another city. And so that's a, have the funding available, uh, because we didn't want that money to go back to the feds, I mean, it was committed to Kansas. And I know, you know, and other airports have done it as well, and they're going up, we don't let it go back, and, and people like Brad say, don't let it go back, you know, stick it in a project in Belleville or Goodwood, or whatever the case may be. Um, and so that's always a good thing, so that money always, pretty well stays in Kansas, maybe not to this airport. But, for the most part, none of it gets going back, because it gets used to stay, which is a wonderful thing, though, wait.
Yep, and this is, again, this is a state of Kansas, so if you chose today to not pursue this project, maybe stay with that Kansas, for the state, fuck it.
Yeah.
This is, this is right.
You know, I think the thing you have to think about is, is, you know, we're going to have some big thing that I had to talk about tonight, uh, best you just sort of review that, and when I look at city spending also, you know, we have some concerns, and I was covering up my comments about fire department equipment, uh, um, so the bugger gear per se, which is about five thousand dollars a person, and be about thirty-five cents. And I would, while watching, we, and we start thinking those things, start getting the plans, which, you know, I would be trying to get plans for the future here. However, this year, we're, comes through this year, financial, on, on the general fund side, and as good a shape as we've ever come into, and don't give me a credit here, uh, but it's, that's what I do, we just, we fail some things to get, and maybe some change to our pursuit now, so, you know, I mean, also, really, if you do that, you know, what, where you do your needs, like recreation, whatever the case may be, you know, but I mean, that all has to fall in place. Um, you know, my biggest concern of this one here is, is, and I don't know what'll happen, I wasn't here, kind of city asked for the grant, but I'm just, once you ask for it, and you say, then you go, no, we don't want it after, I was like, that shows you didn't do it, and, and again, that's why I insist, if you've been, those last few months, if I apply for a grant, by how small it is, we get approval here first. And that way, I can blame you guys, and I mean, that's, like, the bottom line is, everybody knows, and I think that's what's most important.
Yeah. And, and it might be, the gentleman, uh, from, that Eric says, uh, I don't have any idea, uh, what the need of having those lights at this time provides significant enhancement to the city. And maybe someone could talk to that, they're telling me how we would benefit immediately from that, and, and just, I don't mean to sound confused, but I do know if I were to have seventy-five thousand dollars and give it toward the fire department, they've got an immediate tasking or immediate, immediate task, they could use those funds. So I guess my question is, how is it that we need the lights? I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, it's not lights, it's.
No, this is not grants for lights, this is for.
What is?
Amen only for taxi light reconstruction.
Okay.
This is for accessing the hangers.
All right, and same question, do, do we, they're not able to get them into the hangers now?
They are, they are, they are of a non-sanitary design. They do not meet current FAA requirement, or design criteria. And the pavement is, again, I don't know, the age of twenty-five, plus her lives, again, predates me, twenty-five, thirty years old. Um, it's holding up acceptably, but, uh, this is an opportunity to bring up standard and up to the airport.
Would, would the FAA find us or, or, or criticizes for that? You doing?
That happened, for that, in the entirety of the time, as far as I'm aware.
And, and the only reason I'm asking that is, I, I just know that when it comes to the fire department and other things that we have going on, if we don't meet certain standards, couldn't there be penalties?
Not really. But I'm talking about, and I get, and I have no, my issue here, by not bringing that, needs to be talked about, is the fact that, um, you also would turn back six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the funding. That's maybe a key issue here, it's not like, it's like, so you said seventy-five to get, you spent ten cents to get ninety cents. Okay, and we have a chance here to make improvements of an airport that this town has had, and, and again, um, I mean, I've been, that's all, bouncing my, here, having an airport in your community is important. Um, simply for the night, man, one of us have a heart attack, and that's the best, the fastest way to get us out of here. I don't care what the airport was supposed to be that night, none of us do, because that's importantness to have. And again, my biggest concern is, the city applied for the money, got awarded the money. So now we can do a project, we're not going to do a sixty, a seventy-five thousand dollar project, we're going to do a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Then, that's where, I mean, I get where you could, and we have all the different needs in this community, but I think that's what falls in place, is for ten cents, we're getting a dollar project. You know, for fifty, for seventy-five thousand, we're getting a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. It's a lot of money, yeah, but this community, along with a lot of federal money that was found, over the past few years, built what is, I mean, I remember coming through here fifteen, twenty years ago, even the airport was, nothing, I mean, it really was, I mean, kids who, the older guys here, but they've done a great job with it, and we do have an airport that I think is proud of our community. Um, if you want to grow industry in this community, and, you know, I think there's always a demand for that and everything else, you have to have an airport with those amenities. And Dale and some of their board members can maybe talk more about that, so I think that's the key. Again, my bottom line is, is the city applied for a grant. You've got money right there, you want to take it or not? And I realize the match and everything else, and we had to balance everything's out, I, I, that's, in my role as city minister, I think it's doable. Um, you always have to balance things to find out what's more important to you. I'm not downplaying a fire, because that's on my radar as well. Because it needs to happen, and, and we're talking about how we can make that happen.
Uh, can I speak? Hey, uh, I think when we voted on that, we were kind of told it wasn't too big a deal to maybe turn that back. But, I'm, I don't want to see that funding go away, I, I think, if we can do it, we need to do it, we need to spend the seventy-five and do it. I mean, that's a lot of money we're throwing away there. That's just my, I think we need to do it if we can.
Thanks, Howard.
It probably would commit to next year, just from both, from a both standpoint, all things, or whatever.
Yeah, if you wanted to wait till after January, one, to encounter it.
Yes.
That would be fine.
Yeah, that would give us a reward.
Yeah, we're not going right now, there's, there's none of that.
But I do think that, and I think, and I didn't want to plan on this one tonight, is, is do we want to as a council say, go ahead and start an application for the additional two fifty? Now, maybe some of them will look at, I'm not saying it's the right thing to do, but again, and, and of course, the nice part about it, and Brad, if I alluded to that more, is if we do a project, one project of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, and then you add a two fifty to it, you, your cost of mobilization doesn't go up anymore. In other words, if it costs fifty, forty thousand dollars mobilization fees, I don't know, they'd be in this case here.
Yeah.
Um, they really don't change to add another quarter million dollar project, because they're here.
So, you know, just big picture, looking at your, your design here. Gray is existing taxiways, the wires exist, some buildings, blue, so this is a long term. This, this, that is taking from the Master Plan, they'll be, yeah, since the.
Blue wasn't after the year.
The yellow is long-term buildings, so you're just proposing the six seventy-fives, the red border. Yes, sir. And then the additional two, one, two fifty is the green. The green, yep. And the other thing I'll point out is, um, we have had a conversation with the local spray plane pilot that operates at Old Center Force Base here. Which, he's, uh, what's his, two at the moment? No, I'm sorry, that's, it's one, I'm sorry, two is the, one, um, of putting in a larger, uh, aircraft pack. That is kind of the reason, if you see it kind of widens on that, the top one, is we're going to make a larger, wider, I'll say taxiway. Yeah. Or taxi lane that moves the way you actually. We'll call it larger, and a lot of it'll add a lot of, the runway now will, for, I'm not going to do it two times, however, larger aircraft, B two, right, right? Runway taxiway, we don't have a place right now to house that. We don't have a place right now to house that aircraft, but the hope is that someday. We attract somebody to do this, so that'll give us that setup. Um, I think the other thing is, is, I mean, this, I mean, had to come back and talk more. We're not putting a gun to your head to decide this tonight, I mean, we need to come back and talk, we shook hand. Um, but this airport is a very economic viability to this community. Uh, there's lots of analysis done. Uh, I mean, Mr. Meyer also here, y'all.
Oh, probably three or four times a week.
Yeah, and he's buying you for business. We have a spray plane based here, that does our crop, that's our number one, uh, state export rated. Uh, I know the governor's fallen in the air before, going to the, 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 for the facility. So, uh, uh, but it is a community pride, it is out there, it is a, a revenue generator, economic engine for the land. I've been happy for coming to talk more on a lot of that detail, I'm not trying to give you, I'm taking it.
And Mr. Dinko, what were you saying about January first?
Well. About budget years and covering funds and everything else. The bottom line is, if we say tonight, we're gonna continue moving on. We're not gonna come to him until he starts bringing that contract for himself. Uh, for, I don't know, but the firm, and then we'll have that, then we'll cover that, that time. And then when we bid the project, which won't get bid now till next spring. I'm guessing as you bring this center bids, April.
Earlyst.
At the earliest. So that's gonna be the next year anyhow. Anytime you make a motion to spend money. Uh, if you spend them, you say, we maybe should spend six hundred thousand dollars on, but without the second, third project, six hundred thousand. It is an expense for that given year, it's covered funds that year. The only thing we have this year was, we might have to his contract this year, maybe.
Yeah, if you wanted to tell me to wait till January one, I mean, we'll have to comment.
And so, so, so by both of standpoint, in years that rolled together, it's more. You know.
Okay.
I feel good about that.
Again, my recommendation is, is. You've got a unique gift laying there. I think the airport board, and, and again, unfortunately, we weren't contacted last fall to be here, but then discuss what's happened. I think they have full belief in the project. Not, okay, thank you. I mean, the bottom line is, and, and, and I know these gentlemen, um, they do a lot of work at the airport, so they, they're invested, I mean. They do a bunch of work out there on their own time and everything else. So it is a good thing for the community, uh, you know. Yes, another project, but, you know, and, you know, pretty much, we did November last year, it wasn't about the project, I think everybody's hoping to move on, wait. You got that point, but, yeah. If you say no, you say no, and I get that, but I always worry about impact on very. And that's unknown. That's not fair, just unknown.
So as in, so then we're just, we're just gonna vote on this grant right now and not. The additional two fifty, right?
That's correct. The question is, do you want me to put together the package and bring it to you to try to pursue it or not? I mean, then, you know.
I think my recommendation, I'll put that thing, January one change in, is to move forward with this, the current project. Um, and also to request, uh, finish it, you're due to, uh, determine, uh. An application for a future project that could be tied with this one.
I mean, what also is. The way the timeframe is gonna work on this, the way to selection for that extra two fifty, and I'm just ball marking again, would work is, I don't know if we're gonna do it. Actually, we're gonna design it, and we're gonna design a basement, which is this first grant, and if we do the second, all designers know. Survey's not gonna change, geo section's not gonna change, my fees are gonna change. And so you're not paying, you know, if you were gonna do it later in three years, you're gonna pay another for all that. You're gonna pay for a contract to come and do it all, set up, they're already gonna be on site. So there is a lot of economies of scale to be gained. Now, I understand. It's more upfront, so that's kind of your trade off of potentially doing it. So, but, and, and that's a very great assumption, very, I'm sorry. Recommendation is, if I can go, put some numbers to it and come back, it just, all the more we think we would go out here.
I understand your concern, I, I think. Basically, when we told the state, we're willing to spend ten cents to get the ninety cents, and now we're kind of. Stepping back and say, okay, maybe not, and I, I get that's something that's a percent. Um, I think in the future, with the expansion, I, I get. Spending ten cents to get ninety cents is a great thing, but if you don't have the ten cents to spend. Then maybe that isn't right, you know, I mean, we do, we have this big project we're about to talk about, so. Uh, I get, I, I think there are two different issues we need to talk about. I think the six seventy-five is. Like Tyler said, we've just there, we've made, we've kind of told that state that we're willing to spend it. Uh, but I think we'll have to take a hard look at the two fifty. Uh, the initial two fifty, because we, we have some other pressing issues in the city. That's, that's.
The two fifty, if we get the grant is.
Yeah, if we were to get it, that's still a big if.
Yeah, but I would not submit it, much of.
But again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna submit it, say, okay, yeah, you can get it, and then we're back saying, well, we don't have the ten cents.
But you're not submitting till January, so that gives you another.
I mean, what I would recommend is, if they do approve tonight to go for the original. For that discussion, and I'll have the information for you to make that decision at that time. Or mid-November or the, the mid-December, wherever you know. You know, whatever we agree on, we would start the project till you need wires to.
There's two options.
One is to, to do the fourth, but the present grant we have now. And the second would be, or maybe outright, to separate, is to request Benish, um. To continue researching, applying for an additional grant for the other piece.
But not necessarily submitting yet.
No, 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 because you're not gonna submit till, you break stuff back to him, say, it's gonna look like this and this, this.
This is the grant, this is the number, I will submit.
Because he may come back and say, well, I was wrong, it's three fifty, or it's one ninety, or whatever the case is, you know.
Okay.
He's going to spend his hours, he's, he has done all the work, yeah.
So the rolling good promotion is to continue with the six seventy-five, but the seven fifty. Yes.
Yeah, it is.
There we go, thank you. I'm moved, proceed with the taxi lane project. Utilizing funding the city will receive from the Kansas Department of Transportation against this airport improvement program for the proposed taxi project.
Alright, it's been moved by Councilmember Allen and sent in by Councilmember Hanson to proceed with the taxi lane project utilizing funding. The city will receive from KDOT's, uh, Airport Improvement Program for the proposed taxi lane project. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
The other piece I think could actually be a consensus, if you have a consensus for him to just bring numbers back to you, because you're not bidding anything to it. I mean, in other words, you're saying, hey Brad, go get some numbers for us, you know, get a better number than two fifty, I think that could be done by consensus.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming today. Okay, moving along to the lease of property and sale of building to the Eldorado County Fair Association. Sarah, you wanna come up?
It was just a little crumb of mind. Uh, Council President and Council Members, um. This has probably been talked about for a couple of years, because we met probably when I first got here. Um, the Fair Board would like to build a, a larger livestock pavilion. Um, for more shows, for the fair, but possibly bring shows or other activities in the community. Of course, they, they leased the area now to the southwest of the, um. Recreation Building, um, organized with our army, um, and they wanted to build it basically straight east of there. The problem you've had is the city has a shed they pulled in there. And we've met a little bit, and, and we've talked about, if they would buy the shed from us. We would have to move out of there at this point in time, otherwise we'd move it by, maybe, maybe some of the city buildings. Um, the building is. I'm not sure how good the building could be moved, it's been moved in there before, it may have been moved before that, but. And, uh, but they, they can use it as well and tie it all together, so.
Yeah, I, I, just to read our, that one said, we, um, we've been contemplating and moving towards an expansion project. The, uh, current, um, for each programs, uh, grow the existing structure that's there. Um, like to be stayed in that position, um. It's ideal spot to, for a really nice complex for sports and agriculture out there. Um, we would like to build basically a covered arena structure, be multi-purpose. It could be, uh, livestock, it could be shooting sports, and there's a variety of educational purposes, um, that it can serve. But with the location of the city maintenance building where that sits currently, it's just, just really a handicap to that. Facility and to the site, to the, to expansion, and it's rather clumsy, um, to be always be navigating. We, what city folks was having there, and then potential, uh, where we'd like to expand to. So the Fair Board, um, has, uh, given authority to consider purchasing that maintenance building. From the city, if the city would, would, uh, would still consider that, um. So we, uh, come to you tonight, um, to ask for, uh, a motion to, um, enter into contract negotiations. For the purchase of that building, um, to ask our council and your council to, um. To enter into those negotiations, and then to bring back to you, um, a purchase agreement. So, that's for a rat, and we certainly appreciate your consideration.
So it'll also be a lease involved, which we've talked about working for this winter, or. Last spring, yeah, last spring, uh, basic number we're looking at, and we talked about different values of the building, but. I think we've kind of landed between, especially between us, the twenty thousand would be a fair bit. Um, we give them, probably more than, the buildings may not work that, but they're, I mean, it's, it's kind of that. Of course, we don't, they're building slightly, may cost more, but I think we'd also fit into other city facilities as well, so. Um, at the same time, grow that area for, for for each projects, and for all, I have those projects. I can see it being used for other events from. Uh, uh, since I'm a former extension agent, I can see having some things there, some crop stuff, and, and, and their livestock. Actually, you have an under, an arena that's at least protected from the top, on the side, and you win, but has some stuff in there. I think the, the sky's the limit.
Absolutely.
And I, and even though I'm.
And we're, we're very close to a fundraising goal to get said arena structure built. And this twenty, we feel like we can still accomplish what, what we need to, there's still gonna be some additional funding. The fundraising needs to be done, really, you know, head and whole run on this, but we're very close.
But they've raised some, that's my line.
Council President, Cuz, are you, sorry, good. Okay, I'm for the city attorney to draft an agreement between the City of Eldorado and then the Eldorado County Fair Association. For the lease of the property for any livestock arena and prepare a sale contract for the sale of the storage building.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Councilmember Hanson and sent in by Councilmember Bernard. To, for the city attorney to draft an agreement between the city and the Eldorado County Fair Association for the lease of the property for a new livestock arena. And prepare a sale contract for the sale of the current, uh, maintenance storage building. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thanks for your time, Sarah. Thank you for the look forward with you and then contract and being. Final approval. Alright, thank you, you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, next up, Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund for Sewer Lagoon Project.
And Chairman, Council Members, um. You've been at our project for a couple of years, you know a lot about it. Um, the city is having a, as I wrote in my notes, since nineteen eighty-one. The Laguna's gotten to the point where it's not even fishing anymore. It is used, says, you gotta start, you gotta stop releasing, that out of the river. Uh, we're not under consent order yet, so, I mean, there's not timetables and being pushed with everything else. That comes next, because I've been through that before, and they're sitting, so, um, it's been talked about. A year ago, the city council area generated a grabber with BG sold us. Um, if I remember right, six hundred thousand, give or take. So we covered that money last year, we have, for the, for the, for the, I almost discussed this very, I thought it would be, some adjustments there. Uh, the project has to move on, unfortunately, and I think it's been talked about, and, and. And I understand why it hadn't been, because, um. When you borrowed ten million dollar project estimate, there's the two million dollar loan forgiveness is still playing, so you're gonna borrow eight million dollars. Over thirty years. All you gotta do is go and use a simple amortization charge, and it says. You gotta come up with about four hundred thousand dollars a year for payments, at the end of those years. And also some fees, and occasionally you had as well. Do the math, take four hundred thousand a month, divided by twelve, it's thirty. Eight, thirty-nine thousand a month, we have a thousand, eleven, thousand eleven hundred customers. Average customer has to pay thirty-five dollars. See, like, I mean, that should not, it should not be a secret to, I mean, you, you guys have seen these numbers for at least two years now. Here ago, when Brad brought these, not Brad, um, Brian, um, Foster, he brought this machine, it was there. Can you stop the project now? I don't think you can. First of all, you've already committed a contract, it's been six hundred thousand dollars. That is committed. That is, that is committed, six hundred thousand, you said you're gonna do it, so we're past that stage. Of course, as you go through the, the loan, the loan thing, is they have ransom to go through and do a financial analysis. I think ransom, then they combine what inserted in their numbers, I think they're a little bit. Unfortunately, and, and, you know, in my previous say before I came here. We had to do a hundred and ten million dollar project, with about ten times the population, so we're at least up there. And if you do the math there, they have to make payments of five million a year, or about forty thousand dollars a month. And, or four hundred thousand dollars a month, and they have eleven thousand customers. So guess what? It comes up to about thirty-five dollars per person. Nobody likes it, but you have to do it. The advantage I had in that community before I got there, they had already started, uh, moved to start increasing the races every, rates every year. And they moved their rates a little more time. We may have a period, you know, race rates last spring, but probably needs to rate it here the first year again. And, and, and we talked about that last spring as well, so there's nothing new here. And, yeah, do you stop the project? I don't think you can stop the project, because if you stop the project and say, we're gonna do it. You're gonna get a letter someday that says, guess what? You're gonna do it, and you don't wanna get there, to rest me, and that, and that. And, uh, something you don't wanna do, is it expensive? When you look at, 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 at. The, 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 the subject now has served this community for forty-seven years. And you're now making the investment for the next forty. Thirty-five to forty, I mean, that's what you make. It's a little good, size too big, I don't know, it was sized. And, and, I, I hope the council was involved with it, toward a population of up to five thousand. I don't think that's, that'd be, I mean, yeah, that's what you wanna grow your community to. Uh, you know, this project, of course, is, includes buying more land, have more land to buy land, but also have land to do irrigation on. Because of irrigation, um, and that does what the Southwest Kansas cities with, with irrigation out of their Laguna water. After it gets to certain cycles, we use Laguna water right now to water, um, the fairways at the golf course. And of course, it's great, uh. Point is, they're hitting with all the water, so that's not gonna be a possibility, but they use them now, it's very beneficial and. Uh, I spent, I was at the golf course, from across the country standpoint, last Tuesday, my granddaughter. And, and I found a lot of golf courses with across country, um, your fairways are nice. I mean, it's, we, we get, we can do a great job with that, so, um. I don't know if you can stop. You know, there's, maybe we should, we can stop a little bit of, of this project, I don't think you can, I mean. And you have enough, you know, our permits are saying, you know, our permit that we have right now for ways where it says that we might have to have something moved by the end of this year. And we start that process, this is the next piece here, because after we have the money in place, we can do this. Last year, when the city committed, committed last October or so, that six hundred thousand to walk to, uh, Benish. We actually had an encumbered last year, which luckily we had enough reserve funds, and this would solve that a little bit too. Um, it's a lot of money, I get it, uh, but I think you have no choice but to move ahead. What Kate needs is asking for is, as we move forward now, and again, there's a whole file agreements. That they wanna know from us, and I think what Kate's got, what I wrote in my motion here, is. That we plan to move forward, we're comfortable moving forward to SRF law, um. You know, after review of the analysis you have for ransom, financial. I don't know if you have a lot of options, and again, you've been at this for more than one year, I mean, it's, this is nothing new, um, at least a couple of years. And thank God for the two million dollar loan forgiveness, because that saves quite a bit of money. But that's two million dollars you have to amortize out of it.
And it will come to a point where they will, I mean, they'll start handing down fines, correct? If we don't do something.
Or we're gonna do, we're gonna be fined, or they'll pull our permits.
Presented with before, like, they were basically holding their feet to the fire.
Yeah, and when you get the consent order, and I had one of those former city, they said on, now you've got, they've required, they will start doing fines. I got out of fines here, city, because we put in place exact timetables, which we had, we had to report back. Um you know, everybody says whatever service rates are going up, and it's higher, it's cheaper in this town, stuff like that. I really believe, and I've talked to other engineering firms, um like it or not, in 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 most communities, I think down the road, not too far away in every community, you're gonna see water rates together, be for residential, it'll be twenty-nine dollars a month. It's just the way life is gonna be, to meet the requirements, because we want it without good water. I mean, you know, the water that we release now, that's what we get stopped on, it's not a good thing, I mean, it's, I mean.
Do I know, uh I just, not so much for the council, because you guys know all this and everything Alan's saying is correct. But maybe just for people, because I know this is a topic, I worked for a bunch of different municipalities. Most of them are going through this, or somewhere in the county is going through this, sewer districts, water districts, uh cities, I mean, it's in part just briefly, I mean, standards have gotten better and people will expect more out of us. And the other thing is a lot of this infrastructure is the age where it's starting to fail, so that's it or not, I mean, everything just to read, just to kind of validate all this, I see it all the time, yeah, it's not fun. But uh it's not like this, this is specific to other going problem, it's just something everyone's dealing with and just the fact of life, so thank you for talking.
And and Pat, I just kind of wish that uh I just recently went to the Kansas League of Municipalities. And there was definitely a lot of structure, uh a lot of discussions about water, uh water, water, water. Um many individuals uh were saying, and again, if you choose not to invest in that infrastructure now by the time you do, what you're paying now is gonna be cheap. But if you wait another and keep pulling it, it becomes more expensive, more expensive. And all of this is still new to me, um but I I've got a document right here from Katie. And she just says, uh Alan said, Darcy supported, if you do not meet those standards. It can lead to penalties, corrective actions, and in severe cases, other mechanisms. And then on a caveat, uh I just wish that uh more people in the community would visit uh the 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 facility to gain a better understanding. Then the water is not simply turn the faucet, take a bath, take a shower and flush the stool. There's just more to it that goes on it, but if you're disconnected with that, and you're not seeing the corrosion. And you're not seeing the age of the pipes, you you just have no idea. As to how come these rings do what they do.
Yeah, I guess the only thing, because you guys touched on this, with the the state uh doesn't find as long as your, my experience is, as long as the city municipality is working toward a solution, they are gonna drop the hammer on you. But if you ever, you talked about why you can't stop it, well, you just said, if you had a council that said, you know what, this is too much money, we're just gonna not deal with it. Then Katie would be like, no, yeah, you are, so, anyway, thank you all.
Okay. So then we have to vote on this tonight. I would recommend the the proposed motion that I wrote there, moves it authorize uh energy management, where Katie is saying for help, we'll be reporting this second loan, like review the financial statements. So.
I'm president, I think it works, we've moved to authorize the interim city administrator to write a letter to Katie's Department Health and Environment, informing them the city of Ellsworth is comfortable with moving ahead the S R F loan after review of the analysis provided by ransom financial.
I'll second. All right, it's been moved by council member Alan and seconded by council member Hanson to authorize interim city administrator to write a letter to the K D H E informing them that the city of Ellsworth is comfortable with moving ahead with the S R F loan after review of an uh announcement divided by rates financial. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh next up, combined administration and inspection agreement with the North Central Regional Planning Commission for Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehabilitation Program Services.
Madam Chairman and council members, um as you know, the city earlier this year applied for subsidy received funding uh for housing rehab and demos. Um we are hoping that there will be announcement made shortly that we will receive those funds. And in preparation thereof, um what was his name, the North Central Regional Planning Commission uh would like contractary services. Uh also want to pay for the grant funding, um but get the contract in place, so when the grant is formally announced, we can move forward with it. Because um the timetable on those grants are fairly quick, so um the first one is basically on the um she have a pushback here. Um
Administration.
Yeah, their services are administered, and then the second one, the next next item would be for the uh radon lead clearance assessment of those items there. So um you know, I mean, that's three one first, but um I I'd recommend to move forward with the first one to do. Uh move forward first one, if we get this all signed, that way we we can, we're ready when the grant is formal.
Council President Coats, I move to approve the asbestos, is this the asbestos one? Um I move to approve the administration inspection agreement with uh North Central Regional Planning Commission for Community Development Block Grant C D B G Housing Rehabilitation Program Services in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, with the city responsible for forty-five hundred dollars and grants being grant funded, they utilize an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. The contract will be null and void if the grant is not awarded by the Kansas County.
Sorry.
All right, it's been moved by council member Hanson and seconded by council member Alan to approve the administration and inspection agreement with the North Central Regional Planning Commission for C D B G Housing Rehabilitation Program Services in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, the city will be responsible for forty-five hundred and grant funds will be utilizing the amount of thirty-five thousand. Note that this contract will be null and void if the grant is not awarded by the Kansas Department. So, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is the asbestos inspection, lead assessment, radon and had clearance agreement with the North Central Regional Planning Commission for the C D V G Housing Rehabilitation Program Services. Period.
Madam Chair, you did this so well, nothing to say, save us love. This is what we're ready to go when the grants are announced officially.
Well, I'm president, uh I move to approve the asbestos inspection, lead assessment, radon and lead clearance with the North Central Regional Planning Commission for Community Development Block Grants, C D B G Housing Rehabilitation Services. Contract will be null and void if the grant is not awarded by the Kansas Department of Commerce.
I have a second. I'll second. It has been moved by council member Alan and seconded by council member Hanson to approve the asbestos inspection, lead assessment and radon and lead clearance with the North Central Regional Planning Commission for C D B G Housing Rehabilitation Services. The contract will be null and void if the grant is not awarded by the Kansas Department of Commerce. I just want to point out for everyone that these services will be paid by grant funds, so no additional cost to us. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Almost done, okay. Um we'll discuss our request for one-sided parking in the one hundred block of West North Main Street, so it's kind of from Douglas to the co-op-ish.
Madam Chairman and council members, um Elsa Corvage had to me about discussion about making basically the south side no parking. Um of course, as I said, if you look at it, you got we do have a number of businesses along the north side there. Um you know, I understand the trucks are large, they come pulling in there, and I and I did tell the company to discuss this tonight. Um and there are large trucks coming in there, and of course, if you just sit there and watch during the day, and of course, a lot of cattle trucks get weighed too. Because you guys, just remember cattle in our community that are sold online. And then they, and then they come in, weigh them, and then they ship them out to to the buyers. And so you come through here, and if you notice, and you know, this traffic problem, I've not heard of it. As as you get further west, you know, cars parked on the south side, the trucks are on the wrong side of the street, because they line up straight up the scale. And I get all that, I don't think anybody has a problem with it, you know, um you can discuss it. I I I think there's, you know, again, this was just discussion only, um the concern I would have is is maybe before you do anything. Um you know, what the business is longer, think this, you know, uh you have a beauty shop there, and you have a real estate office there, and of course, a coffee shop. And and now a meat market opens certain days a week, and so um you know, and I know parking is always a problem in downtown. You know, we talked earlier this spring about problems on Douglas at the intersections, of course, the fast way to solve those problems is take out about ten parking spots. We don't want to do that either, so you know, it's those bounces you have to get, so.
I don't think it's a good idea to get rid of parking, it's been that way forever, you know. I just, I don't think you want to do that, I think you leave it like it is.
There's someone here from the call that can
No, but I I informed you that we discussed this, I
Yeah.
And Alan, did they give you an idea of what they wanted to see happen?
No parking on the south side.
And they want the whole block.
Yeah. You know, right now, again, as you, during the day, especially after coffee shop hours. Um and you just sit there and watch, drive down there and watch, because I drive out of town that way every day. Um they're cheating, and I'm not sure if I, I mean, I shouldn't say that, I mean, it's fine, I mean, nobody has an issue with it. I don't think anybody would take it for it, it's a part of Congress, and and you get it in this town, I mean, they're, you know. It's how do you try to, you do a lot of uses altogether right there, because um how many years has it been since that piece of street has been that busy? But Congress on the north side, and that's a good thing.
Yeah, and I feel like we're getting a lot more bigger trucks coming to the co-op than we ever had before, so. Problem on those sides, and I can see both sides.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody disagrees, you know. Unfortunately, our world has moved to that, you know.
Yeah.
Um there's semis, they're all getting, they're loaded, you know. No paper, straight to the elevator, more, you know, two night airbus truck.
Mm-hmm, right.
Anyway, a very few at most, yeah, yeah.
And the co-op has its own semis that they're bringing in and out every day.
That's very good.
But parking is a craving of those two, I mean, and every day, every season, the coffee shop is busier, if there are people. Then where do you have a park?
I also think that the sidewalk in front of those businesses leaves a lot to be desired. I mean, I saw someone almost fall down coming out the coffee shop the other day because it's that that weird slope, so.
And again, if they would come, I mean, if they were to get some money with us, there's some could be done, I guess, you know, not this year.
Right, there's a lot that needs to be happened. I mean, personally, I would like maybe somebody from a co-op and maybe some of those businesses to come and ask out like an open discussion, kind of, so we can like, you know. Yeah.
I I'd like to know if if half the block would help the co-op, because half the block is in front of those businesses, and the other half is in front of the gas station there, they just got the part from the gas. But they're not here to ask that, like, then.
I'll pass on that, that's good.
Is everybody okay with, do we need a motion to table it, okay?
No, that's good, that's especially I own, so.
Perfect, no action taken on that, um all right. Prepayment of coronavirus state and local school recovery funds, S L R.
This one I hate, and yeah, I live here for eight, and so um the city got received four hundred fifty-two thousand, hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy cents of what we called ARPA funds. Um you had until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four to encompass those funds. You had till December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six to spend those funds. So the spring after I got here, thinking that all the funds had been spent, because they told me to use them to do the A M I water meters. And it was all spent, so it was with numerous people. Well, in April or May, I was, I get a nasty letter from the state, said, Alan, you didn't turn reporting for justice for um Ellsworth this year. I go, they just spent money last year, oh, you gotta report regardless, so I spent five hours trying to get on, trying to report this. There was no record of how to get on there, but I got on there, and that's when I discovered that we had not spent all of our money, but at that point in time, we couldn't do anything with it. Um not sure what will happen, don't know, pause, we have to pay back four thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and seventy cents because the funds we all had. What I don't understand here, and again, it's easy, I think it'd be where I'm 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 making a comment, I wasn't here, but why that's that money was not put into a separate fund, I have no idea. It shouldn't have been put in a separate fund, that's what I did, the nursing I was in, it wasn't, we gotta pay money back. And I would say payback is not what they make them ask them for, pay back, and that's not a good thing, so. So they want back the the four thousand uh nine hundred thirty dollars and seventy cents.
But we were awarded four hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and seven cents, correct?
Correct.
So not that it, not that it doesn't suck to pay that back, but we could be paying back a lot more.
Yeah, thank you, well, I I made a motion, I moved to authorize to return the unobligated coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of four thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and seventy cents to the United States Treasury.
I'll second. All right, it's been moved by council member Moon and seconded by council member Hanson to au- uh authorize the, to return the unobligated coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of four thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and seventy cents to the United States Treasury. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay. We're not to department heads, Dublin, anything else for us?
I don't have anything.
I think I saw Ralph still here, right?
All right, so just a couple of things just so that you're aware of, it's been a really busy week for the fire department. Uh we've just come off of National Fire Protection Week, and so our routine on that is, is that we arrange with uh the daycares and with the grade school, um and we have the kids come down and go through some of the preschools, we take trucks out. Um but we do fire trainings, and so they can see that down guys, uh so they're not afraid of that, we do smoke cranes, we do all, so there's a lot of guys get involved in that. Um obviously, we have trucks and equipment out, so they can see that and enjoy that, and on the Saturdays, we do our our soup feeds and our fire truck rides, so it's good P R for the community, so. Um been a lot of time and effort put into that, and guys did a commendable job on that, as they always do. Uh we've seen firsthand benefits of training, uh we we've worked, uh in my career that I've done on down there, there's thirty-five years. I've seen where the kids knew more what to do when their house was on fire than the parents. So it's, it it's worth the effort that it takes, so that's, uh that went well when that's done. Uh the end of this month, I am scheduled to do the, we're really supposed to do it annually, but I've I've I'm doing it biannually uh to do pump certification test uh on trucks that I hope will pass. Um and Casey Stevenson, who did it before for me, will be doing it, uh we're gonna be doing that at the point fifth. Uh which would be a full Saturday, and myself and him, and maybe one other guy, but uh we will be certified trucks. Um and then I guess really the other thing is, is I have been in conversation with Alan, we've been talking about some of the numbers and some proposals for gear and whatnot, so that's coming up on the radar. Um and also the guys, we are, we do have another fundraiser uh that we're working with my co, on trying to get uh the funds that we're raising for the training facility. Uh we've made good headway on that, uh and two more of them are done. And so we're we're working on that, and we're also working on the location, and I've also been in contact with Alan about that, so.
I'll report that there in a bit.
All right, so now, unless you have any questions for me, that's all I've got. All right. All right.
Andrew Campbell's not here, no police chief, no route. Streets, how about Mr. Buckles, anything for us?
No, unless, unless you have some information on the bond, which is what. Nothing else.
Anything else? Okay, thanks for being here. All right, city attorney, what you got for us?
I do, I don't, I can't think of anything.
We need, we do need to set a date.
Oh, yeah.
He needs to do his COVID core training. What really works well is doing like at five-thirty on, is it the first and third Tuesdays?
Oh, yes, the city court is the first and the third Tuesday. I think I almost heard one, city court would be the first or the third, oh, I really like doing it on the third Tuesday, but.
Okay.
Because in city court, generally, generally speaking, you know, I just said, we get, it starts at five and usually we're down by five-thirty. So I, I would be comfortable scheduling that and then we can do it relatively, a third, we get relatively quick COVID core training.
It would have to be a call meeting, of course.
Yeah, it would be, it would be open, I mean, when you can come.
Two or more together in his name, so those two shall be depressed.
But the, I wouldn't, it would be an open meeting, it would be a city council special meeting, it would not be an agenda where you take action, you would just get information about COVID core funds, so.
So we can do this next week or wait till November the third Tuesday?
Yes, can we do the first Tuesday, I gotta remember my Tuesdays. Which Tuesday is this, and what day, what, what day is it?
Next week will be the twenty-first.
Then we do the twenty-first.
Or wait till November the third Tuesday?
I think any of the Tuesdays work for me, do you choose any?
The first.
November.
We can do the first Tuesday in November, which would be, that's election day, that'll mean that.
Exactly.
It's, I mean.
That may not make a day for us, so let's not do it then.
I will, I've always had city council members election day.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not.
I won't figure, I'll be over there.
I'm waiting for the second Tuesday, November and.
That's the.
That's the, that's special day, so we're here.
Fantastic, they. We're doing it on the third Tuesday in November. Sorry.
I would really like to do it the eight, November the eighteenth because we're going to run out of time.
I'll go ahead and put it on the agenda with the, I'm going with.
If we can't come, we do a special.
I will, I will absolutely do a special training, I have kind of given a one-on-one with Councilmember Moon, I'm going to talk to Councilmember Allen at least briefly tonight, so I have done those. I will make sure everyone has their questions answered. Some of the people that were involved, that started are no longer good and are not even going to get the training, so it's just one of those things, so.
Thanks for that, Jerry.
There you go.
Right, city clerk? City, interim city administrator.
Of course, I do. Couple of things to get the president to dance the last couple of days, one I got this morning are the city gets their conference shirt through the county municipal shirts, which is a caveat. And I, and this to me is a, a flaw to our employees. We have hardly no work comp claims. The employees are working safely and trust me, I know what, we haven't got our new modification factor yet, but we're going to leave kind of like a record level. And you've got to realize mods everything because on any employee, let's say we have a, a, a street employee, for example, and the federal says you have to pay this much work comp for every hundred dollars of salary. Okay? That's put in place, so then you have the modification factor. Starts one, so you have low claims and you have a little bit of here, your mod factor drops down to point nine, point eight, point seven, something like that. So let's say, for example, it's five dollars an hour, or five dollars, five percent, so a hundred dollars, five dollars, and so if it moves down, it's thirty percent less. I also have been cities where the mod factors are hundred and six, one point six. So it multiplies, so employees being safe, no one needs to stay, we keep them healthy, keep them working and and they don't have to go through any hardship or loss. We are also a situation where it's a great benefit to taxpayers. And again, I applaud the city employees for doing their job, careful man. And they get their work done, but you know, trying not to do stupid stuff and, and, and that's important and I like to acknowledge the employees for that, because it's important to them, of course, it's important for admin staff to have staff available for more and also importantly, to the taxpayers community, it's our wingman all the way around the staff. Also, can't announce it yet officially, but tomorrow morning at nine o'clock by, on our website, for the community, for the people out there listening tonight, there's another grant program available for some demolition. North Central County Regional Website tomorrow morning, our website, it's a, it's a, it's a, there's some match involved, but I can't announce it yet, I'm not told to, but look at our website, if you have a demolition project you want to do both in the city or outside the city, go to our website tomorrow morning and find out. I don't think I cross any lines there. Also, on a pretty much stepping today, we're doing the project next year to put the pass away at Conkle, one fifty-six. Kedon has moved the lead day, it was supposed to be on my birthday, but they're going to move it now till February, or January, February, no, I mean, there's always kind of a, that always happens and it was good move, so they're going to advertise in January, they've been in February and of course, we are going, that's a five percent, the city pays five percent of that project and we, as I told you maybe a couple of years ago, that which was a disordered, has to be done, because next year, Kedon is doing a mill overlay from, on one fifty-six from the one forty junction all the way to the Bard Canal line. And of course, that piece was right in there and they wanted us to pay for it and I says, we gonna, and so he was a hundred thousand dollars. Works out well and, and, and so that's a good thing. Ralph, I, Fire Chief, I have been talking about training gear. It's not cheap, basically, it's three hundred five thousand dollars a, a suit, give or take, we're hung loose, man, I hope it's been for, we're also reaching out to somebody about some possible land. Yeah, we donated to the city or bought cheaply to do this training facility off because again, I, I totally agree with, with the chief about the training, how important it is. So that's all good, Fire Police Department, we narrowed down the applications, made some contacts now. I'm trying to set some things up, you can feel some things more like that, some things up there here and, and get to that process and then hopefully bring one or two people to the entire council to look at, we do got some of that because I really feel that fit our, that would fit this community. We went through there and, and narrowed it down a little bit, we're down to, I think, six or seven right now, so had to work with that number and then go on from there, so feel good, we did have another resignation last week in the Police Department, that's, I'll put it to the record. And we're just going to deal and work through as, as we move forward and then, you know, we're, we're going through right now is one, I think salaries is an issue, which brings along from how we address the salary issues, yet our salaries comparable to the counties SO salaries, so it's how do you move forward and do that, you know, we do offer a great benefit with the APNM which costs the city a lot of money and so it's how you bounce in and sell that. I am having staff coach a career fair in Salina on Thursday, never been there, I thought at least get our name out there, maybe some walk across, police officers or anything else. I'll be going with her part of, part of that event as well, I think we got to get on the public's end, we have jobs and, and working for sales was not a bad place to work. And so we'll be on the pushing that, so. That is all I got, I think, tonight, thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, city council, Tyler.
Uh, I don't have anything.
Um, just a couple of things, Bush, and I talked to Angela, but the Bush in front of the glossy lady either needs to come out or just be taking care, it's full of dirt, it, we've had last week I had about six different people complain about how bad it stinks when they walk by it, so. Yeah, and then, but it just, part of it's dying, it's collecting all the, it gets all the like trash from when the wind, either way blows, so. And then also, we had a couple of questions whether there might be somebody squatting in the hospital.
Is it?
It's in the old hospital. So might need to have that checked out. Yeah. That's it.
I'd just like to say at the seminar in talking about investment in water and infrastructure, that was real helpful for us to come to the conclusion that the investment is a multi-generational investment and not just an instant gratification for here and now. When you talk about thirty years, I'll be a hundred years old and may not be here, but there's a lot of children out there who are coming of age. So it was real helpful to understand it's a multi-generational investment and not just a ad hoc, we want to do this because we are going to do it.
All right, we'll keep progressing.
Uh, two things real quick, one quick question with this resignation, how many police officers are we down to? How many do we have on staff?
We have, well, he's here till, till twenty-fourth, we have two here and one academy.
Okay, and what's a full banning?
Six, a chief and six, and six officers.
So seven total, yeah. And we'll be down to, with the one out of the, so we're at three, we're losing one, but we're good.
Yeah. Hopefully.
Should we graduate soon?
Hopefully. Um, we get through there and get, you know, like that. And again, I think this is a multi-year problem, I mean, then you won't be here longer than three days old and we just have to keep moving forward and recover.
Yeah. And then about the fire, I know it's probably just this pronounced or used the wrong word, you, you said training gear, I just wanted, on the record, it's bunker gear.
I think it's.
You said training, but it's actually for the gear for the guys going into a burning house. Just so that the council knows a little bit more, only because I just happen to do the inventory for the fire department as well. We normally have forty people in the department, we're seven thirty-eight. So forty, seven bunker gears what we use, we have about ten extras that we've acquired over the year. Federal regulation used to say that gear had to be less than ten years of new. Because unfortunately, this gear you could buy and put it on shelf with ten years, it degrades and expires. The new federal regulation actually says five years. Governor Kelly came out last year and said volunteer fire departments in, in Kansas will follow the old regulation, ten years. If you look at about the fifty sets of gear that we have, we have twelve that are good. So we have guys that are working in bunker gear that's twenty plus years old. In a year, we'll be down to nine and in two years, we'll be down to five sets of good gear. What we would like to do is get everybody into new gear and the five sets that we have that are still good will become loose extra.
We'll look at some of it as I can, it's all right.
Unfortunately, the stock is not cheap, but.
Take a five, take a five thousand a year.
Yeah, we are, we are sending guys in potentially to burning houses with gear this.
And I think we have this one, getting some firemen. That goes you, our chief here, is these are volunteer that do not get paid.
Right.
And, you know, if, if I had a full-time fire department and they were getting paid and they got hurt, there's work comp that has that we get these.
Right.
I mean, you know, I'm not trying to, but it's something that's, it's very serious and, and I think we can put some things here and go.
And I realize this may not be all by anyone, I mean, that would be a big deal, I get it now, but we need to at least work in the right direction.
But that's going to get toward the end of your hand, July, we'll do some friends review and, and I think we can do something. Right, because we've got to start to, it'll start there, you're not going to get there.
It's all good, thank you.
Okay, just a, a couple of things from me and I know I had talked to Dustin about this one time, so refresh my memory and for everyone else listening, whose responsibility is the sidewalk in the front of their house? The homeowner, correct?
Theirs.
What about the curb in front of their house?
I'm going to say theirs, but I know you guys made some motions last year, I believe, where back, curd, back curb was six. So like the weeds that are already done, we'll be, but I would believe that, you know. If I had the most frequent, they have weeds grows, I'd take care of some, I would want to stay fixed. And most of we have problem with, it's not to be the curb, but also weeds behind the curb that they have that vote as well, I mean, I don't tell you that. Yeah.
And the crum, like if the cement is crumbling on the curb, is that the homeowner's responsibility or the city's responsibility?
The city has done quite a bit, of course, we have put in Troy's not here tonight, but didn't we, we did a and I, that, that wasn't required, I know the exact time, we, we agree with the spring. We've done some curb rebuilding work and what, what Troy has done with that curb building work has was he also tied in, he knew that ex-homeowner wanted to replace the driveway. Okay, he knew that, so he definitely tried to do, do the curb at the same time the owner, maybe you have, I mean, it makes great sense. And we've hit those things and again, it's hit the miss a little bit, you know, and that's what the store, whatever, whatever the issue is for it.
And now let me ask this question, and it's just, I asked, if you have a sidewalk and it's crappy and you what is the order, like do you have to have a sidewalk?
We can make it based, yeah. Unfortunately, if you have a sidewalk, now you have to.
Okay.
Now, again, the new dude coming to town here is going to move here and he's going to build this new house, me, and, and I'm not going to have a sidewalk. Unfortunately, this community did not enforce sidewalks, I'm not, I'm not going to, they don't know what happened, but.
I'm not sure, I'm just honestly curious.
Part of the tale. There is no sidewalks, I mean, and the point is, is the city, and I've always said this, any city council has the ability to pass an ordinance that says, everybody's going to have a sidewalk, you don't have, we're going to build it, we're going to fill you. Do that in the meeting after I quit.
I, I was wondering, like, where we have sidewalks and say I don't want my sidewalk anymore.
Now, the other thing the city could do it again, not to, I, it's worth discussion and I've done this in other communities, is we, the city offers some rebate programs. Basically, in the one we had in, I was in Hoys after the tornado, we offered people that were not in the tornado. Basically, the city paid for the cement and you pay for everything else. And, and then you have so much suburbia where, and that's a possible program we could talk about down the road and I think those make sense because people, you know, it would give them the encouragement to do so, you know, and it helps that. You know, the sidewalks are on other property because they are on the right way in most cases. And, you know, but I think, you know, and somebody gets hurt, we're all going to sue you. Ultimately, the homeowners are most responsible. Just the way it is, but again, we have parts of town without sidewalk and again, unfortunately, I mean, it is what it is. So.
Okay, just curious.
If you're talking about sidewalk, it takes care of the sidewalk that you build out there because of rocks across it that nobody's taken off. When they had that big rain, it was, okay, we need to. I'll have a chat.
I'll have a chat. Yeah.
Okay, well, it's time to go then, so, anything else? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
President, I'd like to go to the side of the intersection. Entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Hanson and seconded by Councilmember Allen to adjourn the meeting at seven P M, any, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Meeting adjourned. That might be, well, everybody, we're still.